Good morning, we'll call this eight o'clock, it's eight o'clock, so we'll call this meeting order. The mayor is still excused because of this research we had. Red, red, oh, red, I haven't done some reds.
He's not coming, yeah.
The red is excused. Okay, well, and Councilman Nocis will say this later.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and to this world.
Lord God, heaven and water, we take the first day of this vote on this. We have to spend your same spirit amongst us as we make decisions for this great city of Oregon. I ask that you add, that you guide each member of the council and all of our staff for the direction that we're getting to. We have to surprise our voters. Thank you, Senator.
Have any, we have any comments on attend items or non-attend items? And we'll move on to item number six, water security. John?
All right, well, good morning, everybody. At one point I was approached by a council member just in a casual conversation about water in the area. And as a result of that conversation, kind of got the wheels turning because we've got quite a few things going on. So I listed some of the issues that crossed my mind, many of which are in the memo that we're going to have Steve Wade, who's our water attorney, basically go over and see if he's on the phone right now. And as a result of that conversation, I thought, well, there's a number of issues that I think we may want to start looking at and addressing that we, we kind of haven't addressed recently. And some of this came out of even some of the conservation discussions that we had and that we're still under some level of restriction. So what I thought was, given the universe that we're dealing with, with the lawsuits that are pending and the agreements that we have and how we can charge extrajurisdictional communities in terms of their use of our water, there are a number of things that color the way we can handle our water system. So we contacted Steve and Jason and Morgan and I had a conversation with him and said, given that environment that we find ourselves in, what is the best way, what are the tools that we have available to us at the community to address our water, the internal water need? So the results of those questions, Steve, were the memo that is in your pack. So I asked Steve to join us this morning and have you go through some of those tools that we do have and what options we have. Now, again, the point of the conversation isn't to say that, that we have to start doing something today. The point of the conversation is to give you a sense of what you're dealing with and what the tools that are available to you are, and then to determine if and when you want to implement any of those tools. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Steve and he's going to go over what's in the memo that's in your pack.
Okay, good morning, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great, well, thank you for inviting me. And before we get into the substance of, of the issue regarding water planning in the future, I, I do want to take a little time to, to thank the staff, they've done a really nice job. John and Morgan especially compiled a lot of information and helped me work through the issues. And I, I do appreciate it because oftentimes it's one of those situations where, where you've been given a project and you're kind of out on your own, you know, just working through it, trying to collect documents yourself. And that wasn't the case here, John and Morgan did a great job, so I, I do appreciate that. Just wanted to say that first and foremost. Now, a, a, as we go forward and we look at how to plan for the city's future and, and really the entire Gila Valley's future, we, we would have to work within the, the existing rules and agreements that have been laid out before us. And, and I wrote the memo and part of it was a little lengthy in some respects, and I just wanted to give everybody a, a little background on how we got to where we are today. And, and there's really three driving factors that we have to work within. We talked about water planning for the city of Safford. First and foremost in my mind is usually the Gila River, the Gila River Indian Community Water Rights Settlement. And in that agreement, Safford agreed to a water budget of essentially nine thousand seven hundred and forty acre feet a year. Now, the, the thing about that water budget though is we have to understand that that's essentially from the resources that we currently have that are near the river, Bonita Creek, the Mount Ram facilities. They exclude things that are away from the river, like three miles away from the river. Really, anything out there is probably not going to be impacting what we're talking about as far as the budget. We can use that because it's going to be groundwater, not considered surface water. So that's one constraining factor. Another one is the agreement with Thatcher. Now, the agreement with Thatcher basically says we have to treat all customers equally. That's a very broad brush stroke, but that's what it's getting towards. Is that however you treat the citizens of Safford regarding rates and policies and rules, you, you have to teach, you have to treat the Thatcher residents the same or very close to it. There are some caveats, like there's a 10% increase on rates and things of that nature, but essentially it's, it's equal treatment. Finally, you have this, this ongoing forever litigation, both the federal court and state court regarding water rights. And that is still hanging out there, it's going to hang out there for the next twenty to forty years. Not much we can do except know that it's there and it's coming in and understand generally what the rules are and, and plan accordingly. And what I would tell you there is pretty clearly that we want to develop our newest resources, any resource to, to get, to accommodate growth and things of that nature. We want to move away from the river, we want to move south where there's, where there's water. Quality's not as good, it tastes different, I get all of that, but you, you'll be able to secure that legal right to it. We also have some additional water that we can work up on and use from the wells that are, that are near the river, Bonita Creek and, and the Mount Ram facilities. Because right now, out of the nine thousand seven hundred and forty acre feet of water that's currently used by the city, we, or, or it is our current budget, we currently use only five thousand, a little over five thousand acre feet. So more than halfway there, but, you know, still some room for growth. So with that said, I don't want to just, you know, roll on. That kind of factual background from this point going forward, we'll talk a little bit about policy. And I don't have the, the ability to see you if you have a question. So please, I'll, I'll pause a little bit to see if I have questions, but I, I do want to answer your question because that's really why we're here today. And as we move forward with this policy discussion, I look at it as a starting point. This is not anyone coming to the council saying, hey, this is what you got to do. In fact, it's very far away from that and it's the exact opposite. I want to give the council some information so the council can set policy. And the only way to do that is to answer your questions. So interrupt me, ask the question, and, and I think that's going to be very productive. And, and with that, I will, I will stop here in a second. But what I need to understand from you guys, when I leave here today, or at least sometime in the next few weeks, is as we go forward and we want to set a policy, how are we going to do it and what are we looking for? So that's really, now, I'm going to stop here for just a brief second because I've laid out the framework within which we're going to form a policy. But do I have any initial questions from, from council?
Yes, sir. One of the problems we had when we initiated water restrictions, our citizens did quite well in behaving towards them. We had other customers in outlined areas that didn't take it as seriously as we, our residents did. You, you talked about that in your memo and you noted it. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to address that, so I'm waiting to hear about that. Also, you talked about new subdivisions and encouraging them to build landscapes that would be more water conservative. But how do we make a policy that actually states that that's what we want and we would like to see?
You know, that's, that's a great question, you, I mean, you jumped right to the heart of the matter. You know, that's, it, it comes back to, A, when, when we are in a situation where we need to conserve water, how do we enforce it? And, and then B, how do we make sure that the, that the new growth that's coming onto the system is, is doing so in a reasonable way so that water is not, I'm not going to say wasted, but, but treated as if it's a limited commodity? Okay, so we do need to address both of those. And, and I will actually, I, I, I never like when somebody puts the question off till the end, so I'm going to just answer the question, we'll jump around a little bit. But, yeah, you're right, I mean, what you said first and foremost is that the Safford residents did very well in conserving some of the residents in, in the county and, and in the city of Thatcher didn't. I think there was a belief or an understanding that AR rules were by ordinances and things of that nature. Well, what, there, there's a fix here. And the fix is this, we adopt rules through the water company, rules of service essentially, where if you, if we have a, a time where we have limited water resources and people need to conserve and be smart with money because we have a pump down or drought situation or something that's unusual, we, we pass some rules where we say, look, in these conditions, customers have to behave accordingly. And what I've seen happen in the private sector, where we have private water companies, is we have these, they're almost like step-down provisions, you know, a tier one, everything's fine, we have water. Tier two, hey, we've only got about seventy-five percent of our, our water resources that are, that, that are available to us, so we may have to, you know, tell people to conserve and do other things. And then you have tier three where you actually have legitimate cutbacks. You say, look, there's, there's no outdoor watering on Wednesdays or Fridays or whatever, you alternate or you do different things. You can do those by rule as a utility, as a water company, you adopt those kind of rules. And then it becomes an enforcement issue. And the last thing we really want to have happen is have our water technicians become the police force. You know, that's not what we're trying to do. But in cases where you, where you have water outages, situations where you need to conserve water, what typically happens, and, and again, this happens in the private sector all the time, I represent private water companies, what will happen is your technicians who are always out fixing leaks and they're out on the road and they're, they're reading meters and they're doing all this, they see somebody, they watering their grass when they're not close to it. You know, they go up and they talk to them and say, hey, we have a situation right now where, you know, you can't do this on these days, you have to alternate, blah, blah, blah. And, and you just record, okay, this happened, we saw it, you write it down and you go from there. And if they do it, you know, we just have to water off. Now, again, I'm not saying that's what the city of Safford has to do, I'm just saying that's what under Arizona Corporation Commission rules and policies, that's what private water companies do. And it happens routinely. So, so there's ways to, to take care of that situation that are already there, they're tried, they're tested, they're, they're applied and have been so for thirty years. You know, it wouldn't be unusual for the city of Safford without those same kind of, of rules as a utility. Now, go to your second question, new subdivision. Well, that's kind of an easier one, and I, and I want to make a, a distinction here because I, it, I glossed over a little bit my memo that you read. When I use the term subdivision, I'm talking about legal subdivisions defined by the state of Arizona. And that means you're building, you have a developer coming in and they're splitting land up and into six lots or more. That is technically a subdivision. It's real easy again to adopt rules of service as a utility to say, hey, you have to do these things. It doesn't matter if you're in Thatcher or, or the county or the city of Safford, we can treat everybody the same in compliance with, with the agreement with Thatcher, we can treat them all the same. But we also understand that, you know, if you're going to build a subdivision, we want you to, to, to do it in a way that's responsible for using water, okay? And what I mean by that is, if you can use, you know, low water use facilities in your home, you can, you can, you know, limit the size of your grass, you know, not, not build a front lawn that looks like a football field. There's a lot of things that you look at, you can just say, we can make sure, you know, there's, there's reasonable water use. Now, I would never say, hey, let's, you know, you're going to have a lot of law, like, you know, that's extreme. I, you know, we're not in that kind of position. But there are people that will literally lay out ten thousand, you know, square feet of lawn and it's just, you know, or, or pasture or something like that. And that's not really what the, the city wants to do as far as, you know, using its water sources, at least in my opinion. Again, you're the council, you get to decide. But, and, and I would always refrain from, from setting up rules where you say, as a, as a town, we're going to prohibit it. What we can do though is, is set up rules where there's an incentive not to do it. So for example, if you're, here's, here's one way to do it, and I've seen cities do this. If you're going to have a lawn or, or, or you're planning to have a big acreage with, with something that takes a lot of water, well, you have a, a meter for your home and then a meter for your irrigation. And, you know, so you're paying, you know, not, you're, you're paying more, quite a bit more for water. Or you make the meters larger, or there's, there's things you can do. And, and we will give you those options at a later time, once we know, generally speaking, how you want to tackle these problems. But the bottom line with both of those situations that you raised is that we just pass rules as the utility, rules of service and say, if you want this, you know, and you want to receive water from the city of Safford, here are the rules you have to follow. So that was probably a longer answer than you wanted, but, you know, you kind of jumped right into the meat of this. So I hope that did answer your question, but if you have a follow-up question, please ask.
No, the, the one, the follow-up one I have, I'll direct it to the manager and staff.
Okay.
I have a comment, this is Richard Ortega. I think, I know when I observe, you know, different things, our biggest offenders aren't necessarily the citizens. I mean, there's always some, their uses isn't as much as, like, say, our schools. Like in Thatcher, the college, hey, you were talking about green grass, they have them, they have beautiful grass. And then, you know, so to me, it's more, we have to focus a lot on the institution also.
And if I, if I could, since we jumped in and we kind of went right to, you know, some of this stuff, I think philosophically, you know, some council members may not want to go to that, that point. But what we're looking at here is really essentially understanding what we're dealing with. And the first step in doing that may be education first. So whatever we would do, we would do it incrementally over time. And so where we are today may be step one, approach everyone, the schools, the valley, the citizens, from an educational standpoint, maybe even going to the point, I think, you know, Jason had brought up the idea of going into the schools themselves and, and going into classrooms and educating children about water usage. So rather than jump right to the idea of regulating, which we may never want to have to, we can start with education and develop a program and then actually maybe where those programs existed and they even would buy fixtures, well, the phone, slots ahead or a showerhead and things and give them away. So that basically, we have a water issue, which is defined on local levels that we have to deal with. And the idea is that we begin now to think about that issue so that whatever we do is minimal, right? We don't want to, I know that philosophically, we don't want to necessarily run out and tell citizens what to do with their property or with their water, but if we can start now incrementally doing things like education where maybe they themselves make the necessary adjustments, that would be a first step, right? The most extreme step would be what Steve just described, which would be something you would do further down the road depending on circumstances. And I think he's going to address the other issue, which is rates. Now, we've, we've looked at water in the past and generally speaking, when we've done rate studies, the idea has been to minimize the cost to the community, to the citizens that use it. Again, I understand that. Part of though, of the nature of a rate study is to design rates that basically address different use cases so that you have rates that are sensitive enough to usage where those who use above-average amounts of water based on some industry standard will then pay a premium for that usage. And again, so you, you don't have the issue of the inter-jurisdictional agreement because the rates themselves are structured in a way where those who use more water pay more. And it tends to be that Safford residents tend to be the lowest in the valley at this point. So I want to make sure that we understand that we're laying all this out, not with the idea that we're going to run out and implement it. We're laying it all out so that you understand what that universe of options is for you. And for right now, it may just be that we try to do education for the citizenry so that they themselves become self-policing and start to understand the importance of water and, and the value that a hundred years from now, you still want to have enough water for your community as it grows. In fact, Jamie and I were sitting down and Thatcher just released their general plan. Well, they have all kinds of ideas about growth. They have, you know, ten thousand people by 2055, they're looking for manufacturing, commercial. All those things are things that we're going to have to take into account because we have to supply them with the water. So it really ends up being on us to say, be good stewards of what is a very precious commodity and what's the best way to get there. So again, I don't want us to think that we're jumping all the way to the end and saying, well, we've got to, you know, regulate what developers do or what citizens do, but we have an opportunity now to start on the front end and maybe do some of these less invasive things that can begin to have an impact on how we use water. So again, I just want to make that clear, since we jumped to the end and, and, you know, everybody's trying to do this thing. So anyways, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine. I just don't want to get the sense that we're going right to a heavy-handed regulatory approach, that's all. No, 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 I know, you asked a good question, I just, but that's kind of, again, I just wanted to make sure that we talk a little bit more on the front end and that we have a variety of options. So anyway. Thank you. All right, Steve, go ahead.
Well, no, sure, and, and I will follow up with that and say exactly, you know, like, what, what John and I had talked about and I've left the council alone, I thought, you know, we, we've got a good planning process here, we've got gears to develop it. And, and the sooner though that we, we, we develop a policy and rules on this, it's going to be better for everyone because we, we want to be proactive. What we want to be in a situation is, is like, here in the next year, 2022, we adopt some rules that are very reasonable, that encourage reasonable water use, and everybody looks at them and shakes their head and says, yeah, that's a good idea. And you want to get those rules in place before there's a crisis. Because when there's a crisis and then you develop the rules, well, people have planned, you know, with, and spent money in situations where they built large lawns, they, they, they put up orchards and they've done things. And now you're coming in and changing the rules on them, that's the exact opposite thing of what we want to see happen. We want everybody to know going into it what the rules are so they can plan accordingly. And we don't, and, and, and we don't have to be reactive to a, to a crisis, whether it's caused by a quarrel or a drought or, or a mechanical failure, you know, and then have to shift gears and, and cause pain to, to, to people. You know, that's the last thing we want. We want to make sure our policy and rules are reasonable now, everybody knows what they are. And there's never been, you know, and, and in the future, when something happens and we need to, to, to react to that problem, everybody is in a situation where they knew it was coming, they've adjusted and it's not a shock. So, and we don't have to change anything. So I, I think that fits, and, and what John said was education is a big part of it, it's a huge part of it. It's a huge part of it. But before we can educate the, the, the community, both city of Safford and Thatcher and the county, or we can educate our water users or our customers, we really have to develop a policy that sounds and, and that helps us get to what our goals are, which are to use water in a reasonable manner. And again, I'm not huge on restriction as far as how much water a person can use because, you know, there are people that, that wouldn't mind spending $200 because they've got a quarter, they've got gardens and they've got, you know, green grass and they want to do it, but it's their choice, it's not ours. And so that's my own personal philosophy, your policy may be different, but we'll see. Getting into a little bit more of, of the way I would have this conversation going forward, there's three things that I believe the council needs to look at. One is how your rates are set up. The second one is, is how we set our utility rules. I've already indicated that we work through rules, not ordinances. We work through utility rules so that we capture not just the citizens of, of the city, but also our customers in the county and in Thatcher. And then finally, we adopt the same sort of approach with development. You know, we have rules instead of ordinances. So I am going to jump in right now to our rates and our rate design. Now, the first and foremost thing I want to tell is, you know, I don't look at this and say, to conserve water, you should raise rates, that's the wrong approach. But what you should have is a rate design that encourages reasonable use. And, and that's not spin, and you'll understand where I'm going when I say this. I'm going to lay out a few facts that might be helpful for you to understand why I come up with some of the numbers I come up with. A normal house uses about, you know, let's say you got two to four people in a home, you're going to use about eighty gallons of water a day inside the home. Okay, that's for your, your bathing, your drinking, et cetera, dishwashing, all that. Eighty gallons is about right. Over a month, you're probably using right around 2,500 gallons. Okay, so that's kind of a, a minimum amount that a normal home would use. At that point, you look and say, okay, well, you know, most homes use water outside, so what's that use look like? And it's about, conservatively speaking, meaning erring on the side of using more water. You look at that and you say, that's usually about 7,500 gallons is what a normal home would use in a month. So you have, and then everything above that is kind of, you know, above an average use. So in other words, when you look at water use from a perspective of, hey, here's your very essential water you need, here's what a reasonable home would use, and then a tier above that would be everything else. You know, that's when people are using water for, let's just say for, at their discretion, okay? For lack of a better term. So when you see most rate making, your tiers are going to be about 3,000 gallons is your first tier, that's usually a, a low amount, okay? And then the second tier would be between, you know, 3,000 and, between 3,000 and 7,500, that's kind of a second tier. And then the third tier is, is above that. And just like what you have in place right now, the rates go up as you have tiers. So under your current tier, tier one is $2.11 per thousand gallons. Tier two is, is $3.06 per thousand gallons. Tier three is $5.15 per thousand gallons, okay? And those breaks are right, we call them, you know, tier breaks. So, so the numbers look fine. What struck me and, and, and kind of shocked me though is, is where your breakpoints were. You know, you actually have four because I think you're, you know, your, your first tier is, is essentially three, under, under 3,000 gallons, you know, there's no charge, is my understanding. And then the next tier is, 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 is to 20,000 gallons. That's a huge, huge jump. And then from 20,000, you go to 40,000 and then that's your next tier. Those numbers are, are tremendous, tremendously high, bears into what you would normally see. So the first suggestion that I would have is, is look at this and say, okay, how could we set up our, our tier system better to, to help? how could we set up our, our tier system better to, to help, uh, encourage reasonable water use? And if you look at, um, the breakdown by area, where you have the City of Sapper, you know, you, you're using nine thousand five hundred fifty-eight, uh, gallons per month on average. That's not bad, it's a little high, but it's not bad. You would, you would expect to see that in a, in a more rural community. Um, I get it, you know, you'd have some large lots that have had, uh, gardens and grass and all that for a long time and it's historic and, and I get it, nobody's looking to change that culture. Um, uh, we just understand that, you know, it's a couple thousand gallons more than, than what you'd normally see, you know, throughout the state, that's okay. But then when you start going into the county and then, and then Thatcher, you see some, some, what I call tru- tremendous jumps. I mean, two thousand gallons doesn't sound like a lot, four thousand may not sound like a lot, but, you know, spread out over, over, you know, four thousand customers, that's a lot of water. So, so right there, you look at this and say, you know, I'm not trying to pick on Thatcher, but it's a more clear example. I mean, the, the residents of Thatcher are almost using twice what an average, uh, person using, you know, twice what a reasonable home would use in a, in a normal community. And, and again, if I was really going to push it, seventy-five-hundred is high. I mean, a normal, a normal home uses probably more like six thousand. We just always say seven, seventy-five-hundred give a lot of cushion. So even above the cushion, I mean, they're, they're nearly twice above a cushioned amount. That's just a lot of water. So, um, that to me, the, the best way to, to, to start encouraging more reasonable use is, is not go out right now, A, start educating them, A, this is what reasonable use is, you know? This is, you, you guys are explaining the information I'm explaining to you right now that the amount of water you're using, you know, is twice what people would normally use on a, on an average basis. Um, you know, in the summers, what we are talking about for the most part, because that's when, when you have constraints. So I, I guess I would start looking at this thing, let's educate people as to what's normal. Show them that they're, that is high. And then change your tiers. And I'm not saying go from our tier system now down to what you normally see at Prosperity because, uh, that would be a shock to everybody's system and we don't want to do that. Uh, and, and we have to move these things very gradually because if you change it too quickly, here's the other side of that coin, if you change, uh, your rate design too quickly, uh, yeah, you'll generate more money immediately, but, but by a year or two, people have made adjustments and, uh, uh, conserve so much water that it impacts your revenue stream. You don't want to see that happen either. So what I'm talking about here is moving these tiers down, having a rate study done, gradually moving these tiers to a more reasonable level over time as a way to encourage reasonable water use. So that's where I'm going to stop for a second to, to get some feedback from the council and answer any questions.
Sir, I thought one of our beginning tiers was seventy-two hundred gallons, which I believe in the past, we adjusted that for fixed income people and like that before they fell into that parameter where they were only charged the base rates. I, I thought that's where we were on that tier.
Uh, John, you want to answer that or, or my input? Go ahead.
Morgan can probably answer it. I'm going to throw our rates up here that we adopted. Where you can see it for yourself.
The two in your, your numbers here, you have the number of customers, uh, but I didn't see a breakdown between regular household customers and commercial. So may, maybe we'll have that number in the future.
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to say that again, this is a very high-level preliminary look at this. And again, it's intended to get you looking at the various components that we can look at. If we come to the point where we do a rate study, you'll obviously be getting a lot more detail and be looking at that. The key takeaway here isn't necessarily just getting buried into the numbers themselves, which obviously are indicative of use and that's something that will drive those rates. But it's the idea that rates themselves become a tool depending on how you structure them.
Yeah, of course.
And that tool is basically designed to incentivize or de-incentivize the water use. Now again, you don't tell someone whether or not they can use it, you just say if you do, there's a premium for above-average use, let's say as a general statement. So again, the idea is that we have rates as a tool that we can adjust to impact water use.
Well, I, I don't like the government telling you what to do either, but, you know, we're getting set up and we're, we're, we are going to be nice and hard.
You know what, Steve, why don't we just move on? Because I think, you know, again, I, I, whatever our rates are at this point, really the theme is that the rights can become a tool and that would become part of the overall design. So why don't you press on to the next issue?
No, that's great. And, and one thing I do want to add that, that your, your question made me think back. I'll give you just a little story. Um, all of these rates are, are kind of a broad stroke. And sometimes you have situations where, where you have residents who are, or, you know, who are, are low income, um, and, and we need to, to have a program set up for them as well. And I'm just going to give you a, a, a quick story about. My, my aunt moved from Merentie when the, uh, my aunt uncle moved from Merentie to, to Sapper, to, along, along Santa Fe back in the, like, early eighties. And, and they did what, what old okies do, they, they, everywhere there was soil, they could plant something, they did. You know, they had the garden, they had the orchard, they had the trees, they had the grass, everything was there and she loved it. Not only was that, that's her way of beautifying her house in her mind, you know, her way of, she was growing her food and she did. I mean, she canned every piece of fruit she ever grew out of those trees. I look, I go, oh, I helped her. But with that said, you know, after my uncle passed away, she was living on a social security check, twelve hundred dollars a month. You know, I say this because her utility bills were something she literally thought about all the time. And, and I am very sensitive to that, uh, especially in rural communities like Thatcher. So even though we talk about these rates, understand there's going to be, there's also going to be a program for low-income, um, you know, people who can, who can have adjustments to these. Because the last thing I want to do is, is, uh, uh, you know, try to, to put something together that would be a financial strain or constraint on, on people with low income. And, and even if they do enjoy their water, but they have low income, I get it. And one other factor to think about, and, and it seems like I'm arguing against my own case here as we talk about these tiers, but I think it's real and we have to address it, is some of the lower-income people have swamp coolers. You know, they don't have central air conditioning. And so you, in the summer, you'll have higher use of water for these people that are low-income because of the fact that, uh, they turn their swamp cooler on and it uses a lot of water. So we have to have another program that will adjust so that the low-income people who do by necessity, uh, you know, want to use more water, that, that's okay. We can figure that out, but we don't want to have perfection be the enemy of good. We want to set up a good tier system that works. So with that, I will move on. Um, that was just my own aside comment, take it for what it's worth. Uh, the next thing we, I, I want to look at is, is, is how we deal with, with rules, with, with the current customer. When I'm not talking about development now, I'm talking about, uh, the utility rules that would apply to our current customers. What, what needs to happen is over time is, A, we're going to educate the current customers on how to use water reasonably. And that's a great way to approach it. But at the end of the day, you are always going to have some people that, that, uh, in the time of, of, of concern, where we as the town need to conserve water for whatever reason, they may not want to. Or you have situations where, uh, you just as, as the city don't have the reach to go out to the person living in the county and, and make them do something through an organ. So how do you deal with that person? Well, what we have are rules. We adopt rules as the utility that say, if you want service, these are the rules you, you have to play by and you have to follow them. Um, I will use the extreme example of, with, let's say we have an outage, uh, like you lose some wells. Okay, for whatever reason, maybe a mechanical failure, maybe, maybe you had, uh, water tables drop and you need to go build additional well or something along that. We, we had a summer probably six or seven years ago, I forget exactly when it was, where, where we had some curtailments that needed to happen. Well, there, all utilities should have what we call a curtailment tariff or curtailment rules. And I, I indicated those before where I said, hey, these are the situations where you would ask to, to, uh, uh, conserve water or basically use less water people that, that would enforce it. So you adopt those by rule. I don't want to go into the details, but just say, these are rules everybody has to apply by. Uh, you can have an incentive where, where, for example, you can give rebates to people install low-flow fixtures, uh, you could, there, there's a whole list of them. The Department of Water Resources has what they call that management practices. And, and it's, it's a worksheet almost that we can work up of to set policy that we think are good. But these policies, they essentially become rules at some point to the customers. And the customers are going to follow them, um, as a condition of service. And I will tell you that ninety percent of them are just basically saying, we're encouraging you to do this, here's how to do it. Uh, most of them are, 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 people can elect to follow them or not and it's okay. I always focus on the curtailment because that at the end of the day is the one that causes the heartburn and, and if you're going to tackle a problem, you know, address the real problem. And that's when you have water demand exceeding, uh, the, the water supply. And that's the real rule where the rubber is rode, if you will. So what we want to do is look at that, focus on it and say, look, in the worst-case scenario, how are we going to ensure that everybody who's using water doesn't, you know, doesn't exploit or, or, or take more water than they needed in a time of a crisis? And so again, we're not going to go into the details of those rules, but eventually that's where you need to go to. Because like I said before previously, we don't want to have a situation where, where the city of Sapper has by ordinance ensured that its citizens are, are conserving water, uh, to a high degree, but you have somebody in the county or in Thatcher that's, you know, out there flood irrigating their front lawn, you know, you just, you just can't have that. So by rule, we can make sure that doesn't happen. Um, I'm going to stop to, to talk about that. If you guys have any questions or concerns, you know, let me know now that that's the thought. We, we adopt some rules.
So by the way, in the air and council, what I'm showing up here is language for every person who applies to service. This is Sapper County Thatcher residents. When they come and apply for water service, they sign a service agreement. This is the language that they agree to. So on the first part of that, you can see that they do agree to, uh, for such services that there's a very, very published rate in accordance with the applicable rules and regulations in Sapper. So that's kind of what Steve's touching on as well.
And, and Morgan, that's, that's, so we're already doing it? I guess where I am is that we need to really set up a policy and have a mechanism so that we implement it better. And, and I'm not sure exactly how it was implemented in the past. I just know at the end of the day, if we're sitting here talking about, you know, uh, the policy and, and, and what we want to do, we understand that there's a need to, to make some changes and revisions. And again, it's not going to be tomorrow, it's going to be over the long term. But it's better to get the, the, the policies in place now and the rules in place now so that when we really need them in five years, six years, uh, they're there for us. And, and people, you know, have grown accustomed to them and, and understand what they are when they buy into the system. So any questions? All right, hearing none. Um, last, and, and these, this is another one that gets a little tough to, to deal with, but it's, but it, I look at it and say, let's take the easiest, most, uh, straightforward approach. And here's, we're talking about rules on, on new development. So the new homes and the new businesses that are coming in. Uh, there really are three categories that you've got to look at. You've got to look at, at businesses, you've got to look at subdivisions, and then you've got to look at the, the, the small, you know, person who's just kind of building their own home type of, of development. Uh, the rules don't necessarily have to be, uh, different, but you just understand that they're going to have different demands on water. And, and with some like, uh, the, the businesses and the, uh, the developers of subdivisions, it's a lot easier to enforce because they have to come to you with plans and they have to show you and inspect and, and all that. So, uh, the utility staff gets a, gets a good feel for what's going on. So when you have a subdivision, you know, they've got to show you by Arizona law where, where their water lines, their sewer lines and all of that are, are going to be located, their sizes. So you get a really good feel for, for what's going in and, and where it's going to be located and, and those types of things. So we can adopt rules that, that encourage things like, uh, limitation on turf, grass, uh, zero escaping, meaning we're encouraging the desert look instead, low-flow fixtures, uh, limited water features, uh, other measures like that. Uh, I'll give you another personal example. Uh, I live in Lamine now, down in the county. Well, well, because we had it designed for a pool, we couldn't have a, a five-eighths by three-quarter meter, we couldn't have the smallest meter, even though it would give us plenty of water. By rule, they said, no, you've got to have a three-quarter inch meter. And the reason they, they do that, um, it's, it's not because I needed that much water. I mean, that's just not the reason for it. The reason for it is because, hey, I'm going to use more water than a normal home. And by that three-quarter inch meter, I pay, you know, fifty bucks more a month. So, you know, that's a way for them to, to understand that, uh, you know, we're getting more money because you're having, uh, a higher water demand. To me, that's fair, that was my choice as a consumer. I wanted a pool, so I'm paying fifty dollars a month more as a base fee. I'm okay with that, that was my choice. And that's a situation I want other people who are building their homes, another developers to know, people can adjust to it if they know what they're getting into. So, um, that's my approach on, on development, whether it's a subdivision or a person who's building their own home. If they know the rules going into it, they can adjust and, and they can make their decisions based upon what we're presenting and then it's their choice. So I think that that's the important one because I, I didn't hear the council, councilman's name, but I agree wholeheartedly that we're not here to be a heavy-handed government and dictate what people do. It is quite the opposite. We want policies that lay out to people, hey, you can, you can make your own choice and you can decide how much water you use and you can decide what you build and you can make all these decisions. But at the end of the day, these are the rules that you're going to follow. And if you decide to be, you know, uh, uh, the, you know, having a high demand, uh, development, just understand that you're going to pay for that and we're going to be generating money from it because we've got to go out in the next twenty years and, 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 and start building additional infrastructure to meet your demand. Because the more water we use right now and we keep eating into that budget, the quicker we're going to have to go out and spend twenty million dollars on a, on a, uh, I don't, and I'm just making that number up, I'll, I'll think I, I, maybe I'll say ten million or ten million dollars for a, for, for transmission lines and, and wells and everything else down to the south town, because that's eventually where you're going. Um, you know, that's it. But, but again, from a customer standpoint, they get to make the choices. They, they just, we're, we're going to guide them with our policies to, to try to conserve water where they can or, and if they choose not to, again, it's their option, but they're going to, they're going to have to follow rules. So that's where we are with development, uh, they will apply to everything.
I think that pretty much lays it all out there. So does the council have any questions on anything that they've heard up to this point? Okay, well, I think that kind of wraps up the water. And again, I think the idea and, and the work that Steve did was simply to say, here are the options that you have. And then as we go forward and move over these issues, we can bring these out as we discuss them with council. Obviously, we do rate studies. Obviously we do rate studies all the time. I think when we come back to race, we probably want to look at it for the night toward, you know, how we're using the patterns are and then design rates that, that address them. So. But anyway, Steve, thank you very much for coming and, and talking to the council and I guess we'll move on to our next item at this point.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, take care.
You are currently the only person in this conference.
Vice Mayor, um, we've got a gentleman that was at the council meeting the other night on C D B G coming in, but he's coming in at nine thirty. So what I'd like to do is try to jump to some items on the agenda that I assume at least will take less time. So that we can kind of work our way toward that nine thirty number. Um, so I'd like to jump to item fifteen and let me talk about the cemetery rules and regulations.
Good luck. All right. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, over the past couple of months, obviously we've lost a few, two or three city employees and we brought it on by the council. But we need to do more for our employees as far as cemetery, um, which brought um, the item of cemetery rules and regulations. Uh, sometimes you go over for public work through that and an ongoing working modification of cemetery rules and regulations. It's been worked on about every year. We haven't ever brought it back for adoption. So what, the rule that we have currently in there is, you know, cemetery employees, firemen, spouses, dependents can actually purchase a cemetery block, though a few ways, it can be waived by the council. We're going to propose that the current city employees, firemen, dependents, spouses can, could actually get a space from, from the city as a, as a basically a benefit. And not have to go to council. Obviously they'll bring to council that, that touchy situation where, you know, it's four hundred and sixty-five dollars for a cemetery block. That's it. But current city employee passed away and they want to be paid to the city staff. So I think that's a minimal change that would be an added benefit. We do currently allow city staff to be opening and closing, keep that, and eventually the city staff, you know, pay that money for that. Instead of the time we pay them for it with opening and closing of the block, we do have some great employees, especially, we've bought some employees that have very great donations monetary and time wise. We, we actually have enough money today to purchase seed plots for their family. That was through our staff. We actually created and added money on top of that. So I think if we started out with, don't use a plot if that was what they wanted. The city staff can go in an additional tax form and some money to help out those families. So. That being said, I, you know, I've put in your packet, the current resolution that was brought up in two thousand eight. I put that in here for your information, what's in there. We've got a pretty substantial modification. I don't have it in here, but I kind of summarized some of the major changes other than what I just talked about. Currently we have one casket, one cremation permitted in, in a full size plot. We'd like to adjust that to make it where one casket, you know, two cremations because you can also add four cremations with one full size plot. That makes sense. Size wise to do that. A cremation space is six by six and that's a lot. Two cremations, a full size, six by four, that's a lot. Four cremations. So one casket, two cremations is, is kind of what should be. Also our, our current standard, the cost per space is set at four sixty-five for a full size space. We'd like to set the cremation space to two hundred and forty. I think our current policy says half the cost of a, of a regular flat spot. So we'd like to have those both out on monetary value set to instead of half the cost. And we're also going to add some additional verbiage for funeral home requirements and then those also additional requirements. We can get in as far as our day to day operations and as far as cleaning up. Pool, pool and flags, that tree, shrub, that kind of stuff. So when I bring this back to you, I just want to make sure you're okay with what I'm talking about as far as the donation of the plot. But what I bring this back to you, there's going to be so many changes to this resolution. I'm just going to bring back the current one and the new one. I like to highlight the changes, but it's going to be so different. I'm just going to include them both in there. It's a very substantial modification. It's not, it's not changing a whole lot. It's just cleaning up the verbiage a lot where it's making no sense. So that being said, I just wanted to make sure that you're okay with making that change. Bringing forward the employees and dependent spouses, active firemen. Is that what you want to do or would you like to modify that?
I wanted to be second before, because I know you guys talked about, about racing. You use two where you use plot, you use, you use space.
Same here.
Same here. How large is a plot?
Well, I'm talking the space or we've got blocks up there. We include multiple spaces. So I should say cemetery spaces are twelve by six or one, or six. The plots, they count twelve by six in the space middle. And that was a block.
No, that's what we're still.
So we're, we're talking one space, which you can allow, it can be one casket burial or two caskets burial.
Better.
Or it can be one burial or whatever, but we have two cremations. Or even four cremations and then that's six by four.
That, that's what I didn't read. It seemed like it was left out, but you say we, you can stat two caskets.
Yeah. Yep. You can. You have to plan for it and you can first one, plan for it. And that, that's some of the stuff that I want to clear up in this new resolution. I'll bring you. It's, it's kind of vague in this, in the old one from two thousand eight. I want to make sure it's clear. We ran this by the cemetery, whole works where they looked at it years ago and it just never, never got back to council. We approved a lot of this stuff as far as day to day maintenance work. We follow it anyway because it makes sense. So I just want to get an updated rule to grant to you that I want to make sure that you guys, you know, it makes sense that, that we donate something to the family and that's a minimal, you know, that's what they want. It's four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that's it. They want to do that again. It's not like we're going to give them space and we're going to get them ready somewhere else. And I, I've got to say where it's employees, dependents, spouses, children and active firemen. And I thought that makes sense. If you guys want to get this with employees and whatever.
How does that affect current employees, active firemen? How does that? How, how does that affect years later when somebody else went down there and wasn't buried? Is there going to be space for that or, or are they going to be put?
That would be up to typically when a family buy, buys spaces or buy more spaces together. So that being said, if, if someone passed away and they wanted to, we donated one, they could have up to four cremations in that whole block. So if there's four people or two, two caskets and they, they wanted to buy another one next to it, they could all be able to buy additional space for the future.
Is there a paving in there for a family to plan ahead and to buy one over time or something?
We don't typically allow them to buy it over time. On a forty feet or a thirty feet second spot for someone.
If you put in space in a plot, will that lower the price of the plot that they can purchase something? If you put in space, it's in a plot.
In a block.
Yeah. And they then their eligibility to buy the rest of the plot will lower the price of it.
One person's only allowed to buy four. Only allowed that four spaces in the unit. So basically you can buy four, your wife can buy four, but you can bury sixteen people in one. Four spots.
How many, how many does a plot have?
A block?
Block.
A block. One space.
So a block in space would save you.
A block is that. A block, a block, you can't buy a whole block.
Can't buy a whole block?
A whole block. A block is going to be like sixteen spaces. You're allowed to buy four spaces. That's a one individual.
That's a small family.
Well, that's sixteen people.
I guess I have to come up with, I'm losing track of the size of the place we come from.
If you reach to it, well, it's, it's. And if you reach to it, it'll make sense to you. When you reach to the size, there's a lot of them.
Not here. I confuse everybody else that knows what's going on. I'm the only one that knows what's going on. You? I'll get with you.
Yeah, get with me.
So far I'd like to do something for us.
And, and I'll bring back a whole, a whole change and we can talk about it more when we do that. I mean, I just wanted to bring this because it was brought up. If we want to do something, please remember. So we need to get that changed, man.
And I think what Lance ran into was that he had a policy that apparently had begun to be altered and he's never finished. So again, the idea was in light of the request, let's see if we can address that additional benefit. And while we're at it, let's clean up the rest of that, that policy and, and develop one time. So I think we need to clarify a little bit on spaces and how it all works and, and we can bring that back as part of the CCF or even preliminary conversation before we get there.
I do have a question on.
We'll talk, we'll talk. Jumping at the bit.
Yeah. I don't, I don't mentally want to have to take a blue steak out on it too.
And then, and we're going to what, item number fourteen?
I think, um, why don't we go to item number ten? Tammy, you think you can jump in there now to the business license?
Yes, you can. Can you guys hear me okay? Um, so back on September thirteenth, Amy Bell came to a council meeting and addressed to you guys regarding um, the temporary business license and the possible need for a special event business license. So I went back and actually just kind of looked through the temporary business license. And within the packet, I kind of just gave you what my suggestions would be for the temporary business license. Rather than creating an actual specialty of business license. Um, what I'm suggesting is that we revamp the temporary business license from a fifty dollar fee and a three month time period to a twelve dollar fee and good for a fifteen day period when the date of issuance. And the reason I picked the fifteen day period, which I also put in there is to kind of go along with um, finding and zoning temporary use uh, permit that they require. Most of the D D V that they have that require a temporary use event, that, that are temporary use permits, that would also require a temporary business license. I was just kind of coinciding with her for, for that fifteen day period for it to go along with that temporary use permit. Did you guys have a chance to kind of look through what I submitted? Do you have any questions?
How does this affect food trucks?
So the food trucks with new upgrade now has where they can do it up to the fifty-two times a year that they have. So typically if they, as with any, even any person that's going to be doing any kind of specialty event, if, if they know that they're going to be doing more than say four events throughout the year, they can just come get a regular business license for just fifty dollars annually. Rather than pulling out a temporary, uh, you know, business license for each time that they're going to be out there. They can actually just come and get a regular business license for a year, which would then be an annual fee, I mean, an annual business license for a fifty dollars.
This makes us more friendly?
It does. A lot more friendly. So those who know that they're just going to be doing, you know, maybe a couple of the small events on Main Street or, you know, we work throughout the year and we are starting to getting quite a few more events coming up now. And I think this would be a lot more user friendly at the twelve dollars for fifteen days rather than previously was fifty dollars for a three month period. And this way it allows them to, they can kind of make a choose ahead of, you know, ahead of time that they know which fees are going to be, which events that they're going to be, you know, going to. Cause then we'll be now coming to council ahead of time for the whole part as far as what is going to be occurring. And so rather than, because they know, like I said, if you get a twelve dollars, which, you know, if they do four, it's going to be forty-eight dollars a year. As opposed to if they know they're going to do one more, they can just come and pay fifty dollars for a annual business license. That's good for, for one year, for a twelve month period. From the time they take it out.
And, you know, Tammy made a really good point when we were talking about, because I was asking her to, to what she got to. And um, one of the other issues, and it'll come up later in our discussions, is as we go forward and discuss special events and potential for charging is that even by having this nominal fee associated with it, it helps us from an administrative standpoint. It helps, it helps her to ensure that people come in and get those licenses. And so it helps with that process of tracking. People at the events and making sure we're getting cost recovery if we in fact decide to charge that fee. So there are other benefits, even though the fee is nominal, which makes it more user friendly for the people paying the fee. It helps on the administrative side too, because it helps us to ensure that people are coming in and properly uh, doing what's required for the special event uh, activity. So, so it has a dual benefit that we don't necessarily think of. But, you know, a lot of this stuff, we have to administer. And while some of it may sound like a good idea at times, it becomes very, very difficult. So it's a really good point that she made, which was this helps us to administer in special events where you have a lot of people, a lot of vendors and stuff.
We're, we're not going to have to take on any insurance verification with any of these changes?
So if, if they're going through an actual specialty event, who's the, is Stafford is sponsoring per se, then that will go through Pam and she'll verify that insurance with that event. If they're just uh, coming and giving, you know, a temporary business license, you know, if they're just going to be selling their goods up the side of the street or whatever, then we will verify that insurance for them that way. And kind of to go off what John was saying too, because previously we were not requiring the vendors of any of the specialty gifts to have a business license. It was actually within the code that that was waived, which is what I'm wanting to uh, strike out and, and have them come get the business license. And one of the main reasons for that now as well is to verify their T P T. We are getting such a large amount of vendors coming in for these specialty gifts that we can make sure that they know they're, they're required to have that T P T for the sales tax to come back to the city of Stafford as well.
We actually receive sales tax from?
I can't say if we do or don't. That would be Cabrina. Cabrina's the only one that actually has access to that information. Whether or not we're receiving sales tax from people within the city of Stafford.
The vendors.
If they're within Stafford and they found the supplies, then they would have to do the same thing. But I would be able to say, um, I can't give out that information. Do you guys have any other questions regarding the temporary business license? So do you all agree with that twelve dollar fee then? So I can go ahead and get that posted, that changed so I can bring that back to you in sixty days for that? To get this ordinance done?
We can take his own on.
Discretion is what I'm looking for.
I like your direction.
To follow through.
I'm going to ask you if, um, about fifteen days from issuing. So if they come in to see you on Thursday or weekend after next, do they get there? Or can they ask for, I mean, do they tell you when they're going to use it and you?
Yes, and that's part of it. Yeah. That they're required to just let us know the dates that they're going to be using this license. And then we'll issue it accordingly for their fifteen days for when they're getting one.
The time is the, the.
Nine thirty, but maybe we can get the whole rest of the agenda done by then.
He'll need to take a break before he gets here.
All right, let's, can we just try, do you want to take a break right now?
I'm not, I'm not the vice mayor.
You want to take a break? Take a break? I'd rather just keep on going. All right, why don't, why don't we do uh, number fourteen? Why don't we do the downtown Wi-Fi project, Sam?
All right, so. Valley Telecom approached the city of Stafford about offering free Wi-Fi downtown on Main Street. And uh, this is what the coverage area looks like for this project. Uh, Valley Telecom has engineered the coverage layout for the equipment needed to implement this project. Um, this layout consists of access points located on the city of Stafford light poles in conjunction with buildings that are currently Valley Telecom customers. So as you can see on the, the map here, that area on the left hand side is uh, the front lawn of City Hall. And then it shows the coverage area all the way down to uh, Genesee in that area of downtown. And then right there in the center, there's that kind of uh, sweeping area there, that kind of grade that is that part of the lawn from the telecom. So on the project summary here, um, the city of Stafford will pay a one-time cost for the equipment and labor to install the A, the A P S, which is access points. And that estimated cost uh, would be twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And that estimated cost, uh, would be twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, what Valley Telecom will be donating to us is all of the internet service along Main Street there. And they will be giving us a one gig link free of charge, which is a large data pipe. So it's, uh, very generous and it should do well. Valley Telecom will give us full control of the Wi-Fi network and the equipment. And then once the equipment and link are in place, that City Hall will be able to, um, piggyback off of that connection to also incorporate free Wi-Fi in the parks also. And then the estimated cost that Valley Telecom will be donating is that thirty-two thousand dollars, which is based on a three-year term.
And that's basically the service, right?
Yes, yes. That's the service that they'll be providing for free to us. So, um, when they proposed this project to us, we looked at it and, and they did a very good job on it. And so I think it's a good project if we get direction to go forward with it. Any questions?
Who gives it?
The users or the?
You know, like businesses?
It may be for, I would imagine, um, patrons of the downtown area, uh, special events, vendors with us having, uh, control and access of the equipment. We can say, you know, like we want, here's the, um, Mary Main Street. We can have a Wi-Fi for just Mary Main Street. We could have vendors connecting to it. We could have citizens connecting to it. We have full control of how we want to do it.
Is there any benefit to the city as far as like your cameras and that kind of stuff? Does that enhance any of that?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we look at to see if we'd be able to do that. Cause that, that larger data pipe would help. But I don't know if we'd be able to piggyback off of that. We, we have our cameras and everything set up on our network, so this would be a separate network from what the city internally has.
And just thought it might allow us to grow it a little bit.
Right.
Instead it could reach the parks?
Yes.
Line Meadows?
Line Meadows, yeah.
It'll reach the park?
Yes. So it would be through a wired network, but the way that Valley Telecom does all the switching on the vacuum, they could make it look like one network. And so that's like the easiest way to explain how it works out. But they would have connectivity through that same data pipe going out to City Hall.
And we'll talk about this a little later, but it, it would be able to, for some arco funds too, if you wanted to fund the project. They can drop the end of the arco, so we could use arco funding if we wanted to, to take that downtown. And if we decided to do this piggyback and get out to the parks, we could reduce those costs and see if we wanted to use some of the arco money to make that happen.
Custom, the businesses downtown are going to be able to use it to increase sales? We have encouraged him to?
I don't know, but we've got that part yet.
Have you done the marketing analysis?
Technically.
I'm not that.
No, technically they could use the Wi-Fi.
They'll be, I'm sure downtown association probably gave them a creative and try to jump on it too.
There's quite a few businesses that are already Valley Telecom customers. And they're going to be the ones that they're going to want to put access points on the buildings, that Valley Telecom wants to put access points on the buildings. So if we get approval to move forward with this project, then we will probably get the downtown association involved. And, uh, to contact each one of the, uh, people that have buildings on Main Street to see if they're willing to let us, let some equipment come.
You only got one gig. Am I using it all up?
No, one gig is a big.
And all the businesses, he reads, Glen Meadows, he reads a lot of other businesses.
So the city, just to get, just to put in perspective, um, the city of Sapporo pays for two hundred megabytes. And so you have a thousand megabytes is basically what that deal is. Just to clarify, it's not like they're going to get over all of Sapporo. There would be an access point at Glen Meadows. So only Glen Meadows, people who are playing at the park at Glen Meadows are utilizing the park that you said. It wouldn't go all the way that far.
I'm sure the supplier has ways of adding costs.
One other question. Can we look at the estimated monthly service for the Valley Telecom? And, uh, talk about based on the three-year term. That's just for their own estimates. This isn't a three-year deal. We have to pay after that?
No, yeah. So what they were telling us is that this is just based on a three-year term. And then after the three years, we'll just, we'll probably renegotiate or redo it in the next three years. So they're just telling us that, you know, this is the first three years, just to kind of give it a, a calendar.
In other words, after three years, we would assume of the?
I don't know if they would, if they would actually do a hike or if they would just continue to provide the service for sure.
I'm surprised you didn't know that the equipment's obligated to three years.
And we aren't responsible for the equipment.
So what you're saying, I guess, if I understand correctly, is that for the first three years at least, would be no cost to the city or the service?
Correct.
After the three years, we really don't know. If we would have to assume or if they're going to go ahead and continue to donate.
Yeah. I can get clarification on that to see if I can get them to tell us, you know, if they plan on charging us later on or if they will continue to provide that service for us. I can get that information on it if you need more time.
Cause that thirty-two thousand, that's per month?
No, I believe that's. Yes, the total for three years, yeah.
About ten thousand a year.
Correct.
We want to move on to number twenty-one.
So why don't we, uh, why don't we take a break now and then when we come back at nine thirty, we'll have the CDBG gentleman online and we can move on to that. Okay, but just take a break.
Yeah, this one. Yeah.
How about this one?
That's working too, but their token's so low tone.
This is typically required, but since we look at number?
Right. That's, that's so much better for me, cause I don't want to lose track of that. Yeah, yeah. They all took everything. What, right? Yeah, um, maybe. Yeah, no, on to the restroom. Do you want to meet on, uh, it's, keep recording, on buzz it? Did they call? Did they call?
No, not yet. Um, do I just need to tell them to?
He needs to share his screen. That's all what he needs to do.
Do you have to, you can, you can give him control and it should show one of them that he just?
Well, once he shares his screen, I have him already go on the, on the project. He doesn't need control or anything. He controls it on his laptop. I tested it. I tested everything through my laptop before I started.
So he just needs to share his screen and then it'll be good to go?
Agreed. But he needs to call first.
I think he's trying to, no, I took.
Should we call him?
I took the notice off of, like, he can't come for this meeting. Cause of what?
He couldn't.
Yeah, cause what I did is I.
Should we call him from here? Because we can call him.
Yeah.
Which type of charge for the?
CDBG. Uh, number nine.
Number nine. We're going to be on number nine now.
Or experiencing technical difficulties?
John, what page? What page?
Uh, let's see. It is on. Apparently it's not. So basically it's not because it's around taking on possible options to use for CDBG.
Start over again with another public hearing. So we, we asked Keith to join this meeting. I know you probably got some other questions from Monday night, it seemed like. And, uh, we wanted to just kind of open this up and, and talk about projects and talk about the process, talk about our low mod qualification. He had some great maps here that we can, uh, go over and discuss our low mod qualified areas. We can talk about, um, divided areas, that kind of stuff. So I, I think we just opened it up to, to kind of where we left off.
And so just as a kind of overlay, we had sidewalks, basically. We have some recreation and we had light that came up as essentially three items that we kind of said, let's look at those. Now we can add to those. And then a lot of what drives the CDBG monies and the usage of those monies is, is census tracts that are designated as low mod. Now, the conversations that we've had with Keith essentially discussed some of the nuances that occur when you're trying to use that. So you may have a census tract in which your, your activity is occurring, but because of the impact of that project on, uh, the citizen base, maybe that you have to do survey, right? So, uh, again, it may be a census tract that itself is low mod, but because the impact is maybe a sidewalk that's only a short distance within it, it requires a salary survey. So I guess what we wanted to do is we wanted to revisit those subjects, sidewalks, recreation and light. And then if you had questions about how you might want to go with their areas, if you wanted to do a light issue, what would that look like? How would we approach it if you wanted to do recreation? And it could kind of help us to determine, so if we wanted to do recreation and we wanted to use that ten percent, what would that look like? So you get an idea of the subject matter you want to use the money on and then what some of the, um, guidelines would be to use the money for that particular item. So I just wanted to give that kind of overlay.
Some of the things we talked about was, you know, like the example of the park, football court, I think we talked about that before earlier. So Sapporo doesn't have any football courts, so if you did something like the football court, that would really be more of a citywide. And maybe it wouldn't qualify to be a low mod city thirty percent. Even though that little corner first park falls in a low mod group that's over the fifty more percent, it benefits the entire community, so that would happen to be, it would fall. Uh, it was because it, because it would benefit the entire community. It's something that we don't have.
Right, so that park would be considered a city park, therefore the city would be the region towards the low mod would apply. But if you did something more like a vest pocket park or you had a smaller park, therefore the use area was smaller, then the assessment would be more localized to where the park would focus.
If we started at ten percent with a small pocket park, if it's in a low mod area, then that would fall. It would benefit that little community.
So if you decided to use arco money to do ten percent, you could literally use a portion of the funds you can receive from Keith and use to start ten percent in a smaller area. And then, and then go on to, and then Keith, jump in there if I'm getting this wrong, um, and then you go on, substitute the additional arco. And then go on to, and then Keith, jump in there if I'm getting this wrong, um, and then you go on, substitute the additional art funding around to fix the park off. Is that, I think that was what we talked about before, Keith.
Yes, sir, uh, this is the first I've heard of the art fund, that, that's great, that, you know, no issue there, CDVG can be combined with other federal funds, so. Um, so yeah, that, that is in any, uh, block group that is two to three percent low to moderate income. And I, I talked with Steve about all the different issues that we've had in our discussion on Wednesday, um. And, uh, I got some answers on some of this stuff, you know, one thing that Stafford could do that, um. Could beneficial in the future, or even now, um, is to do income surveys, and, and, now I may be way off the, the subject here, but. Income surveys of business block groups that aren't low to moderate income. In other words, target them to the areas, like the darker the, the shade, I mean, the higher percentage of low to moderate income, right? So this one is seventy-five percent. You know, one idea that was given to me by the Department of Housing would be to survey the areas that specifically are not a lighter shaded area. That could be a subject for another day, um, the, you know, that, that income survey data is usually valid for about five years, so. Um, it could be something that Stafford could do for the future, like, let's say, four years from now, your next, next term, you know? Or even right now, if you wanted to, uh, expand the possibilities or, you know, locations in town, where you might want to do a project. With that said, let me zoom back to what we're actually talking about, um. So yeah, we got. Neighborhood right here to the thousands, and considered eighteen percent low to moderate income. But generally speaking, if you're talking about a little park that's a surge, this little, you know, neighborhood, that would probably qualify, um. I talked with, uh, you know, I was, they said, well, what about the first park is right up the street, and I said, well, essentially, first park is, uh, that's the pool. You know, it's, that's what people are going there for, is pretty much half payment, um, you know, for parking. Or the, for the pool area. Not to say there isn't any green space there, but, you know, what I had kind of argued to my guy at the Department of Housing was, uh, this would be a qualitatively different sort of project, so. You know, I'm not here. Different neighborhoods, you know, different, different town products that we're looking at at the end, so I think some of them could qualify there.
Uh, Keith, did you want to, uh, speak to how we could use those monies as it relates to the blight issue? Because the CDVG basically is going to be nuanced based on location, you need a survey, you don't, depending on basically the area served. And that essentially is something we'll have to look at and, and make decisions on. Did you want to discuss, if you would, the blight approach, and, and how blight could work and what the, because I believe that this idea of low mod then goes away, um, so why don't you speak to that issue real quick?
Yes, sir, um, so, recalling the visitation for Monday, there are three national objectives that CDVG project has to, uh, satisfy. One, it has to satisfy one or more of those, right? So, the main one, the bread and butter, is, uh, benefit low to moderate income first, or second, it could be, uh, address an urgent need, or, you know, disaster mitigation or relief, I mean. And then the third one is to eliminate or alleviate slum and blight condition. So, um, what we discussed. In the day with staff, here, um, was somewhere up in this area, talking about. Be designating, uh, a targeted area in, in this neighborhood as a slum and blight for purposes of, uh, removing some dilapidated structures to make room for. Over space and parks, is that, is that right? That was, you guys were talking about?
Well, you were asking if I had to be a, if I had to have structures on it, to be the first slum and blight, or if it could just be a, a basic pot, or a weed, or, you know, what, what is the question?
Well. It, you know, generally speaking, if it's something that a landlord or a leader can take care of, uh, you know, it's not necessarily a blight, that's just a pain in the neck. In terms of maintenance and, you know, just having to mow the thing from time to time, uh. It, it's, that's different than, than if you've got actual structures that are, uh, you know, are like a health hazard that, you know, people are, you know, squatting, or, uh. Embarring activities or whatever are taking place in that, in those buildings, or if they present some kind of health, safety, welfare kind of issue, right?
So Keith, of course you've done it, I had after a meeting, so, say we have some dilapidated buildings around town, um, we don't own the building, but. Can we declare those a, a blighted area and clean those up even though they're owned by someone else? With this money?
Um, yeah, yeah, potentially, hold on, I'm getting another call, I mean, not take that, excuse me, um. Yeah, you know, when you're doing a slum and blight designation, um, it, it can be, you know, fairly micro-targeted, um. As in, you know, just like a block, or even just a, a little group of properties that are next to each other, um. And they don't necessarily have to be owned by the, the, the city, um. In fact, it's understood that in many cases it, it would not be, right? This, at the end of the day, it kind of doesn't matter, uh, it's, it's, it's a blighted area, it's a blighted area regardless of, of who owns it. In order to designate an area that way, um, there's a process that the city would have to undertake, and that involves. Defining the geographic boundaries of it. Uh, documenting it, photographic evidence, and maybe other, if you have others, like, uh, you know, code violations, or. Combination of, you know, if, if they, they declare some kind of hazardous thing, or this brownfield, or, et cetera, um. It would be notifying property owners, uh, and giving them a nice, like, thirty day response period to make comments on, um, the potential designations. So there's got to be public notice, public, uh, input, you know, especially from the affected property owners, right? And at the end of that process, the, uh, the city would enact kind of a resolution with an exhibit showing the, the geographic area, kind of like, you know, line, there's a dotted line around. This neighborhood, or, you know, this area would be so designated. And then that becomes an official designation, and we would upload all of that, or we would, we would incorporate those documents proving that slum and blight, um. With the application for the, the CDVG grant.
Could we skip all that process if we, and, and could we use CDVG money to purchase that property? And then turn it into a pocket park, could be ours, did we skip that process of declaring it blight? And if it obviously was.
The answer is, is yes, um, however, we're trading one public process, um, for another, or, or one, one sort of bureaucratic process for another, um. We're using federal funds to acquire private property, there's something called the Uniform Relocation Act that, that, you know, anytime. Local governments are using federal government funds to acquire private property, there's a appraisal that has to happen, fair market value, this negotiation with the property owner. Uh, to determine the value, and, and, you know, fair market value, make an offer, and, and so on, um. It can be ownerless, it can be, uh, easily done, at the same time, you neighbors next door, Thatcher, uh, Long High School, um. And, I think it is, high school, high school at, I mean, they, uh, you know, acquired right away to put new sidewalks in. Long, uh, you know, about Turf Street, and they had to, um. You know, quite, they had to follow those federal guidelines to acquire that right away with those sidewalks in. If you're talking about smaller targeted area, you might have to do a property, you just have to contend with, uh, you know, as far as making those negotiations and doing that process. If, if the, uh, the property is estimated to, or is going to crave that value of over ten thousand. And getting got to do an appraisal. So, if, if, if that's what you're asking, it can be done, um, but it's, it's sort of trading one process for another.
Would you still have to follow in that, low, one of those low mod block groups, otherwise we'd have to declare a, a blighted area, correct?
Yeah, so if you're to satisfy one of those national objectives, right, both here, uh, going to acquire a property. Uh, for the purpose of being able to, you know, remove dilapidated structures or whatever, um, they, they're kind of still dealing with slum and blight situations. Um, it, because at the end of the day, it's got to satisfy one of those, uh, three, uh, national objectives, right? So if you're intending to, let's say, purchase a property, like down here at tenth and tenth. Um. You know. That's purchasing property, potentially from a private owner, so that you can build a park. In this neighborhood, uh, which is, you know, low to moderate income on both, both of these, uh, block groups, including this one up here, that would be referring to that, reporting. You'd be going for the low to moderate income national objective. Um. You're gonna purchase some other property like up in this area, um. In order to remove structures, really, you need to build them, right? This, uh, this neighborhood too, this, this is forty-three percent low to moderate income, so if you were, let's say, gonna build a pocket park here. Oh, it's fine, but you might have to do an income survey of this little neighborhood where it's going to be served. If you declare the area a slum and blight. Then you don't have to worry about the low to moderate income, uh, requiring it, because you're going for, it was named slum and blight. Don't know if I'm answering your question, or if I'm just going in circles here, but, uh, I hope I am.
I, I think that, that was pretty good, actually, um, so if we were to declare slum and blight and we were to clear a property, then if we built the park, it would have to be on that property, right?
It would have to be within the boundaries of the area that's been declared slum and blight.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, so I think at this point, what we need to do is to try to identify some projects that we can bring back for the next, um, meeting. And I think, based on this conversation, they probably would be relatively specific. Uh, and if Keith can get to something and understand what's involved in each of those, and then we can have another public hearing and go over that, if that sounds okay. All right, I think that's it for CDVG. Keith, thank you very much for joining us, appreciate the help.
Hey, you're very welcome, and, uh, I'm here for you, just reach out anytime and I'll, I'll do what I can, guys, okay?
All right, have a good day.
Yes, sir, bye-bye.
You are currently the only person in this conference.
You said we have to say declare an area as slum and blight?
Yeah.
Does that affect the property value?
Well, it, it can, but by the same token, if you're declaring a slum and blight, then you're not going to be a tenth of, of improving the property. The property, right, so I think in the long term, the property values will up, and, and I think, I find it's an intriguing option, right? So, if you're dealing with blight, and you've got a lot of structures in the city that are, you could again, purchase it programmatically, so that you could use CDVG money as a side role, where you're using that to address that issue. But you could also probably address it with some of your own funding and make that something we work on over time, and start getting rid of some of these areas where you basically got properties that are only used, won't contribute to something, to do something miss. So it may actually provide seed money for a larger program that we pursue over a longer period of time.
What do you know about the book? But, this, there's, uh, abandoned homes all over this year.
Well, and again, based on what he said, you might grow select, so you could pick any digital parcel as light, and address that individual parcel.
And if he arrives, he'll like, he's a thief, finding homeowners, one of them is gone, and now he's living in a, and he's got to take the, the, the.
It could be, because it could be simple, too, I mean, you might have somebody that, that you'd ask them to do, like, fuck, they don't have, they don't have what it takes, and they don't want it, they might, they might, they're, they're, it's, it's maybe, maybe the park can earn anything you can have, right? There might be that simplicity, right? And so I think there's a lot of essential, that's why I'm thinking that we, if we had, if we do it on, go around and start cleaning up property, it's better to, you know, protect, 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 you know, take care of the block, and you don't have to get it from them.
So we'll go over some of the eligible uses for the fiscal recovery funds. And the government laid this out in what in a document called the interim final rule with plans on having a final rule. But it's unknown to date on what's the final rule is going to come out. So all we have now is the interim interim final rule. And there's some additional documentation they've released to kind of embellish the final rule or interim final rule. But the four categories that they lay out within the interim final rule are public health and negative economic impacts, premium pay, revenue loss, or investments in infrastructure. The first one, uh, public health, I've kind of split public health and negative economic impacts into two because they're kind of the broadest of the two or of the four, sorry. The COVID nineteen public health emergency affected many aspects of American life. Eligible uses under this category must be in response to disease itself or the harmful consequences of economic disruptions resulting from or exacerbated by the COVID nineteen public health emergency. A lot of the italic stuff is taken right from the interim final rule. So that will be direct correlation to what the actual document says itself. Some of the uses that you could use under public health are COVID nineteen mitigation and prevention, medical expenses related to COVID nineteen, behavioral healthcare, public health and safety staff, expenses to improve design and execution of health and public health. The negative economic impacts, uh, which also falls under the public health and negative economic impact category includes food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling, and legal aid to prevent eviction or homelessness, cash assistance assistance, emergency assistance for burials, home repairs, weatherization, or other needs, internet access, or digital literacy assistance, job training to address negative economic or public health impacts experienced due to a worker's occupation or level of training. Some examples would include assistance to unemployed workers, state unemployment insurance, assistance to households, small business and nonprofits, rehiring state, local, and private tribal government staff, aid to impacted industries, building stronger communities through investments in housing in neighborhoods, addressing educational disparities, and promoting healthy childhood environments. And so this is one of the really important ones because they don't lay out specifically in this category that parks are under there. But they do reference in some of the frequently asked questions that as long as it falls under, they do reference like a Q C T or qualified census tract being an area where you have those stronger or build a stronger community or invest in the housing in neighborhoods. So that does tend towards the tenth intent from the first part discussion being eligible because those are in qualified census tracts.
Which would be in the program.
Right. And so I do talk about that. This is a question that was actually in the frequently asked question document they released. They have another long document where they have a bunch of different questions. And I pulled this one directly from that and said, would investments in improving outdoor spaces be an eligible use of funds as a response to the public health emergency and or its negative economic impacts? And their response, the treasurer's response was there are multiple ways that investments improving outdoor spaces could qualify as eligible uses. Several are highlighted below, though there are, there may be other ways that a specific investment in outdoor spaces would meet eligible criteria or use of criteria, use criteria. And they do that a lot as they say, there might be eligible uses, there might be other eligible uses. They don't specifically pinpoint, they say it's an option, but there might be other eligible ways. So that kind of led to a lot of confusion within these documents. First, in recognition of the disproportionate negative economic impacts on certain communities and populations, the interim final rule identifies certain types of services that are eligible uses when provided in a qualified census tract. Families and individuals living in qualified census tracts are when these services are provided by tribal governments. Recipients may also provide these services to other populations, households, or geographic areas disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. For example, investments in parks, public plazas, and other public outdoor recreation spaces may be responsive to the needs of disproportionately impacted communities by promoting healthier living environments and outdoor recreation and socialization to mitigate this rather COVID nineteen. The next category would be premium pay. And this is basically is additional pay for staff at nursing homes, hospitals, and home care settings, workers at farms, food production facilities, grocery stores and restaurants, janitors, and sanitation workers, truck drivers, transit staff, and warehouse workers, public health and safety staff, childcare workers, educators, and others, school staff, social service, and healing service staff. So these are a lot of the workers that would be essential during the process that have to continue working. And this is just kind of the category so that you can give them premium pay because they are technically the central workers. And then the final category would be investments in infrastructure. So to assist the meeting or in meeting the critical need for investments and improvements to existing infrastructure in water, sewer, and broadband, the fiscal recovery funds provide or provide funds to state, local, and tribal governments to make necessary investments in these sectors. Those three sectors being water, sewer, and broadband. And this is where we get into that downtown Wi-Fi being a potential project for our park. Because that is a broadband infrastructure improvement as well as broadband in the parks that'd be another broadband infrastructure improvement. The restrictions on use of funds, so they can't be used for PSPRS or other pension funds. That's one of the one for the late use they cannot be used for. Can't use to offset a reduction in net tax revenue. And really, those are two of the two of the main restrictions that you can't use the funds for. The timeline for use would be that the cost be incurred by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, to require only that recipients have obligated the fiscal recovery funds by such date. Funds can be used to cover costs incurred beginning on March third, twenty twenty one, but the cost incurred beginning on this date with the anticipation of enactment of the ARPA and in advance of the issuance of the interim final rule, which doesn't apply to this because we didn't set aside any funds, so these are going to be specific of our related funds. The period of performance will run until December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and that the cost be obligated prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and expended prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty six. So what that means that if we have in our budget for twenty twenty four that we're going to use ARPA funds for a project in the following year, that if they are expended in twenty twenty five, we have already, we've already incurred them, I guess, or budgeted them in twenty twenty four, although they would be expended before twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Does anybody have any questions?
So he gives the funds, we're going to have to use them. What we, if that cost be incurred by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, but we don't have to identify it program?
So we do have to identify it prior to twenty twenty four. So the, the idea behind what it says about the twenty twenty six is that in twenty twenty four, you could say, we're going to budget for use of ARPA funds and a project that's going to happen in twenty twenty five. And then you'd have to pay for the, the whole project by twenty twenty six. So say you have a project that starts in twenty twenty five, but you budget for it in twenty twenty four. The funds have to be expended before twenty twenty six.
We're going to get the money.
Which we already have half of the money.
You already have the money.
You already have half of the money.
So, okay, we have half the money. When are we totally obligated? And what after you want it done?
Before twenty twenty four. December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
It will, it will come around on the budget, but maybe, because I want to do this.
Correct. And I put some projects on here, and now these aren't the only ones. These are just some suggestions that staff has. And that doesn't mean that down the road, more projects could come up that could be, that they could utilize the ARPA funds as long as we have them after, at that date. But I broke them down into the three categories that I outlined. That being the public health and negative economic impacts, the premium pay, and then water and sewer and broadband infrastructure. So park and recreation is one of them where you could use a public health negative economic impacts based on the fact that you look at those qualified census tracts or that it's catering to a under, um, underserved population. And then small business grants is another one where you could go out and you could give grants to small businesses that were affected by the pandemic. Because they, according to the, they were hit pretty hard. They had to close doors. Respite Center is on there, on the shelter respite center. Again, that's another, um, population that is underserved. You have the play premium pay, uh, early literacy programs that you could use through the schools or you could use through a library to do early literacy. Uh, Main Street beautification is another one because Main Streets all across the country were affected negatively by the pandemic. And then we get into water infrastructure. Um, and these are just some of the, uh, projects that we have on our C I P that I put on there that would be eligible. I think a lot of them explain themselves. They have Smithwell, the upgrading older water pipelines. They have some pipelines that are from the forties, fifties, and sixties that we probably need upgrading. You have airport water, getting water out to the airport. You have the Sancho Bridge project, uh, First Avenue and Bachelor, which I don't know if that's included yet. So it's not included yet. Um, and then Gulf Coast Irrigation, which is another one. That one kind of hits on a couple because it's a tourism industry as well. And they specifically say that hospitality and tourism are one of them that's a negative impact. So it falls into two categories, like water infrastructure, because you'd be using effluent water out there. And then also you'd be improving tourist attraction. And then this is the last slide, but these are broadband infrastructure upgrades. So we have upgrading the server, which is in our, already in our C I P for IT. There's a program that IT has looked at that would, uh, I think Sam can probably explain it more if you want to talk about that, but it's called City Works. And then also there's the downtown Wi-Fi and then the Wi-Fi in the parks.
Well, you're three point two, right?
Yeah, three point two total.
Yeah, so one point six, we're going back so far. We're getting to one point six next year, I think. Well, here's the thing with R and D, and the reason we're going through all this is because our physical business is different animal. Normally, if you apply for grants, you come to government, you get its guidelines, right? And so you apply, and then they say yes or no, and then you go forward. Here, it doesn't work that way. It's kind of, you have these guidelines, actually, at this point, are in interim final rule. And you're supposed to kind of figure out whether or not this stuff applies or not. So the problem with that is that there may be, and we'd like to do a lot of it. And so if we build a park for three point two million dollars, names start to show up and say, oops, sorry, that wasn't known before we got three point two million dollars bill on hand. So what we tried to do, Senator Kelly and the business at one point, so we've been in contact with this staff. So we're trying to open some doors to the treasury through the senator's office, which is eventually now has set up a meeting. And we've been successful in doing that. So I want to see if we can get somebody at treasury that has never found somebody's idea at all, or been given an idea whether or not we're attracted or not. And then the other option is to try to look at other things to try to help as well. So, but it's a very unusual, uh, money in the sense that it's very open in terms of how you do it. You've got this kind of broad guideline, but at the same time, they want to do a lot of it. So if we do move forward with projects, I'm going to make sure that they're appropriate. We spend this money on stuff we didn't spend money on anywhere. Regardless of if they are paid or not. And so it's another rearrangement, like we did with C D C B that. Put it for what we know we need. And then we have funded it for, or or we build recreational amenities for this that we don't have like it is, but thank you, Tom. But we don't know the type of and it appears that it will be at this point.
More regulations could come back.
So they don't have the final rule published yet. But they allude heavily to saying the interim final rule is kind of the holy grail right now.
So what we should do hopefully is if we say we've got three point two million dollars, and we need that to go to our parks and that ten percent. We take that and we put it up in the design and make it dependent to somebody and say, you know, here's where it is, if you live on the thinking. I'm on board, I'm not very trapped. And I know for a fact in some of my, from some of our C D O values, that other individuals that we use it and even buy equipment and then we use them in the designation of motor model income to do it. So I think it's really a question of keeping the research and the right context to make sure that if we grow the model income, uh, apart, if you don't monitor the area, then you appropriately, that is why I knew it was that we're getting ready to redo some motor model designation after everything from December to the spring, right? So again, in tenth intent, I think it is that percentage that is very close to being motor model as if we went in some other areas that decided to leave a motor model. That's another thing where you're kind of like, well, I grow the model today, I may not grow the model tomorrow. If I put it in my budget prior to December of twenty twenty four, am I in? So again, that's why we're having this conversation because we're not alone in struggling to spend this money. It's not, it's not the use of money that we're going to spend. It's like they give you a lot of options, but they don't give you a lot of things. But yes, it could be replaced with something, but we should also means that the supplement with idea recreational maintenance. And I, and I mentioned that the whole I think we're definitely having two million dollars to do. You might, you might need eight months. Yes, it's good. So, and I did Well, that was Matthew's presentation is possibility is less. How far are the three companies going forward? Oh, yeah, it all depends on what you pick, right? And, and we would have to do the cost, you know? And if you want to take more of a schmorgish or approach, or you're doing a couple of different things, you want to do downtown and do some other items that are smaller? Do you want to, you know, since we're doing recreation, is that something that is an opportunity for us to help in the recreation? Do you get the golf course as a real expenditure? Like, you know, if it, we'd have to come back, we'd have more details, we could figure out what we're going to do. And that, that would give you essentially more to do a C I P project and more details and more budget. So the idea today is to get sense of, you want to spread around the vertical area that you want to focus on. We can bring the options and you can pick at that time, you know, if we have a lot of possibilities. No, we, we look at whether we do recreation and we're going to be a good way to if it's possible, it's a, it's not, it seems to me, right, to make sure we're going to have water. Something that's still much of a challenge and other things. I, I mean, this is probably the once in a lifetime thing. But all it's something just to do. And that, and that's why we kind of cast it out. I don't care if those four or five projects are going on now. But really, it's going to be I, I just want, I, I could find one, it's an older water pipeline.
Well, Sanchez. So there's, there's two, because there's the Sanchez Bridge and then there's the Sanchez Upgrade. The Sanchez Upgrade, the majority of that is going to be, um, in West D, grant funded. The bridge one, which is a separate project, I think is around one point. I got an off topic. But it would, I don't think it's all of the three point two.
Doesn't mean that we can't come back around, I mean, that's spending that money on the same thing. We already know we're getting, we already know we're qualified. One thing, do, do you have the remaining approval down, depending on now we're building parks? Well, remember now, if we do water projects, it's water money, right? So you can't build a park if there's money to save in water. What I'm saying, no, what I'm saying is that, um, what people look at is basically trading money on. But if we do water projects with the money, we can't take that money and then use it again. That makes a lot of sense. But again, I think this is simply, the idea here is to get you thinking, I know. If coming in, I would say everybody who would want to do recreation, that's the new thing, that's the hot item, that's the money, it's town money, let's play with parks. And some may say that, some may not. So now they come to discussion, we can bring back the vitality of projects with price tags that we use specifically. And then we would be able to look at that and say, well, given the projects that are on, we want to put it together this way, or we want to go all in on this. And we value, and not only we want to, at least have to give them private net and come back with some options with more. And we have time. All right. So you're ready to move on, or is there anything else? All right. So the next two items are really dying because I'm kind of looking for councilmen here. So we're on number eleven, I guess, special event. So what I did is, um, we've had some recent discussions on special events, and it's been through various positions on it. And so I thought, you know, obviously Candy's brought back a new theme, you know, and he was in there and that kind of dealt with it. But we've had a variety of discussions. And so what I put into the task if we're some of the things that council members have brought up or some reasons for doing a special event. So things like how many events does the city sponsor? And of course, we realize that numbers are going overtime. Is there a limit regarding to the number of events? How many events can staff handle is an issue that's been asked, if there's any issue with that. What is the fee profile we are currently charging? And again, I think we're not going to be charging anything for our itself, maybe we didn't pass it or not. And sure, we have a deadline after these funds are appropriated, which is certainly more than you straighted the two plus for the income on the left. So I thought the first place to start with is to maybe look at the cost. So the last full year on dues, thirty five of sixty one, let's see, there was a break. And you'll notice that each event had various large categories, labor, materials, equipment, and others. And over to my knowledge, I'm related to forty jobs and there's some
You got those thirty five?
Yeah. So what thirty, on page thirty five or sixty one, what that is, is the total call. And what that is, is the entire cost for special events for the year, this year, twenty nineteen, forty times the number we're having. And Dan has lost his supply at like twenty twenty one, which we're only partially proof that already has some additional events on there. So if you're, if it was created, purpose is only to show that the number does keep growing. So if you look at the total cost that you have right now, for the entirety of that life, one nineteen, you spent thirty five thousand dollars. Of that thirty five thousand dollars, twenty two of it went to basically pay staff, right? It was basically salary and everything. Then there's materials, then off fifty six hundred, and then equipment, that forty five. So sixty three percent of the other costs go to staff. So what I'm, what I'm trying to get at this point in council is how do you want to go forward with this special event? And given the cost, because I think cost is a big driving factor. So now you have an idea, at least for a good idea, what you're spending. The majority of that money comes from staff time, so it's not, you know, necessarily that we're, it's the equipment or anything. Doing, I think, limiting the number of events becomes difficult, right? Because it becomes very political, like you have this twenty events, you pretend, pretend you don't pay a month to be happy. So is the idea that we come from the perspective of cost? And if we come from the perspective of cost, I'm assuming it's cost recovery. And so the idea is, we want to institute a different model, we want to say that there are certain aspects of the events that we're not going to subsidize. Maybe it's equipment that would say no. Equipment, if we have you basically equipment rentals, that money can then be recycled, it's going to be put, it's used, and therefore, over the long term, you can use that money to find your equipment. I'm not saying to do that, I'm saying that's not. So again, giving the cost, giving the total cost, giving what comprises it, and given the issues that we're facing with the number of events, you know, if you want in the downtown, do you want to see if there's some that can move out of the downtown? Is that palatable? I don't know, but if you reduce the cost. So what I'm doing, once again, is trying to give you where we are in the universe that we're dealing with today, and try and address some of the concerns that have been raised to get an idea of what direction does council want to go from here forward? If there are certain places we want to take.
Well, we already, we just gave you the cutoff. And we have not just wanted to come to court, you say the world event is
Correct.
Although that, that's, that's not going to be the case, but we already got.
Right. And that would be very specific, right? So we could say after the deadline, you're not going to. We could say that we put a certain amount of money in the budget as a contingency. And we could say that if you come after the deadline, you're contingent to it. Again, if it's more messy, it may allow for an event that maybe comes down the pipeline, that maybe you really do want to sponsor. It gives you an option to accommodate that event that maybe you really want to have it. But in principle, it's a plan, because maybe there were other events that wanted their turn that were turned away because of the deadline. So maybe it gives you more flexibility on that.
Well, when you cut down the revenue, it's going to become a new station, right? I said, instead of that. Most of it would have on the stage right now, a pretty good event. And they do sell it for that amount of money, but they don't want to add it to the market. Get it down there, because you would go out on my shirt.
So what do you do when you say, I'm happy with the things we have, and I'm just going to grow? So you pick a number, now the number goes from ten to fifteen, but you want to do ten. You can do that, but then you have to choose so that you can bring the list of events, and now it's not just a price, you bring it all this and deciding, I have to wager, it literally is saying we've been drawn a line here, these ten are in by art. And I'm not saying we don't do that, I'm saying that that's what the process would end up looking like.
I remember those events. Did it have, did it have some, you know? Haven't we talked about one time about, don't, uh, all these different events that we kind of, um, say in, we're going to do in this year, something that in other words, let them, let them, let them, you know, pre given events, we have a certain amount of events, it means we have a different, you know? This, 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 how we're going to be tried on, scared of, the chair line is huge, but anything is closed, the first three years is a threat. You cut, you know, Johnny comes in here and wants to do something, you think he's safe, we don't, we don't do that. You know, we have to draw one, and it's a picture. There are, you know, and also this is about, that's something, that's something we've done. There are, you know, and also, this is about, that's something, considering these events, do they benefit, you know? Must have the difference, that's important. If there's more county, you know, other people, you have to get, you know, bad, really, to get the people kind of cut off with the cost. For a new team, you know, you really never can, it seems like, you know, it's, we are.
Way down you are.
And if they do, they're not going to have a place, and if they're not, that's the, that's the.
Well, all these, you mentioned, like, the majority of our tents, and, 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 I know, just get people, um. At fault, or, this is departments, sometimes to be, sometimes, they want to, so, most of these events happen, um. And overtime recall, um, and for staff, like, in the downtown facility, or building, or property, or, and, and, for everyone that was concerned. Now, you know, when, you know, Friday ends, and people just leave, and, and what about people that run over, and so, they want more, that's what they love. We don't have a whole lot of that to offer, so, I did prefer, um, sort of from the one standpoint, more events require more staff, at times, when, when they're performing, not too. Um, now that I've explored, I'm just going on. The second thing, that, you know, when you talk about the downtown, not every business downtown, is a week of, it's not every business, um. Benefits by having street clothes, in front of the operating, you know, they're, um, I don't know, so, they're all made, over, like. They're going to have their hair done, they're going to, like, you're saying, at a certain time, yeah, I, I was looking at Q and A. They're going to have their hair done on Friday, but, well, they can't walk from three blocks away.
...outside of downtown, I don't know. But let's keep the number of events, at least for the next year or two, given that we're in a wrong with the human there is. And then maybe start looking at some new cost recovery models and look at the revenue and spend to decide and see if that makes any significant impact. And then again, some of them do feel like, like, um, they're looking at the initiative that went through, um, how many of them do they contribute? And what do you see the averages from the year? And then we would be able to meet that too, and then we would start with that limit. And maybe it's a time to have that conversation and while we're having it, let's always look back and think about it.
There is, okay, and there's some events that we have, um, where there's not necessarily defined, but if you can like, you know, such kind of these, um, of all of them. But what we have, uh, as a department, if I'm a vendor, I expect the cost, if I was, I would short, you know, just to stand on management, you know, and not commit to money. And so I think the cost recovery part is, uh, if you can give them that money, probably make a spend. And so I think that's something we need to have on it, and, you know, for people, for anything to learn from it. Um, maybe I will help us everywhere, I mean, what we're trying to have to do is, uh, you know, the building services already established, but you look at, um, a lot of this, and, uh, so, we just vendors come in. Uh, they have different times, maybe, maybe how do you think that you can run this, when, having some type of a fee structure to go there, that helps you, your public, a little bit, like, money to support them.
Most vendors are community, so they have that, right?
Right, who they pay for.
Um, so, you know, uh, like, the bond market, they can, the two ladies that run that, that company, my boy. So, but it would be, the people around the life that would be doing that, so, yeah.
I do have other things that I should be, um, um, it's really, um, they make, no, you know.
Right. I take away the fingers, but then you sort of, um...
Hmm, and now we've got, you know, so there's a lot of people, you know, so, you know, a lot of, well, I mean, well, I don't know, there were different degrees of agreement, right?
So somebody comes up and says, "Oh, do you need cash?" You don't have to hear the sales tax. See, so this, this is good, this is what we need to get at, right? So if we have a, a more important on adding events, and during that more important, revisit the cost recovery model and look at this more closely, then we have an opportunity to come back with it. Because you've never been recovering costs, but you're not. But you can recover some of it, and right now, you're just, you're waiting it all. So I think, from what I'm hearing, at least let's hold the number constant now, uh, revisit this cost recovery, the two structures, the two complete, all of it, and then come back to the new model that says, here's how we want to approach this. And we can do another work session on it, if we'll have time, um, and, uh, let's see what we've got from there.
Is it, is it, uh, please, um, for, for, after, after?
We, we can really, like, if you're gonna pay, we'll, 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 yeah.
Well, we are, are, you know, they just, they have to take it.
Yeah, and, and honestly, what we try to do, we're trying to keep it, you know, because the family has their bad first thing, is they try and keep it for their office, everything, and that's the one, before they go outside of that. But, I'm not saying we won't, but we're trying to keep it, it's probably, it's probably, it's, it's, I, I, that's, that's, maybe, some of the events, I know I like that formation, but I agree, you're right, we haven't replaced people, we haven't shut down things. Uh, I mean, if we have them in a park, or if we have them in a, I don't know, if a locker, a shop, you know, and people, we don't have to shut down, really, it's still giving them benefit at all, because you have cost to receive.
That's what I, I mean, yeah. If you're looking at some of the events, they bring from twenty dollars to, what, eight thousand? I mean, I don't care if we have them again, every week, downtown, it's twenty thousand, yeah, but, you know, eight thousand dollars, it's, it costs us eight thousand dollars for probably eighty thousand dollars change of tenants down itself. What?
... So, again, we're planning all these events and that's that. So, again, I'm not trying to discourage the events. I'm saying let's take the project and see if it might have broken that, you know, there's a way for me to do some of this part recovery. Yeah, we can project it to the event itself and it will be a certain form. Because I think the events themselves, in some respects, we've seen and represented probably right on that where we're in our department, in events, in many respects. And I'm ready to have a, have a, a full, private opportunity to work with them. Only.
For a lot less, for a lot less than over two.
Yeah.
I mean, it might, it, it might get people who want to work for three days and then work on it.
Well, and again, I think it's worth looking at. I mean, having a conversation with, of getting all these feedbacks and comments from, from the council that there's no cohesion, right? So, I tried to kind of pull it all together and say, okay, I would come at this. Well, it sounds like right now I would come at it based on a total number of costs that we're now, let's revisit cost recovery or other ways of approaching it for the end of that operation. Let's revisit it and see what you can come up with.
Yeah, so, that, the cohesion, do we have enough to sort it out? Not to question.
In terms of the, yeah, and how that cohesion is set, because every one of you, a lot of you have been doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had that every weekend, but you guys have to keep it down, down, and you really want to, yeah, I like, I like to say it. Yeah, I think, I think we got a good idea, a new, well, I mean, we could prioritize somehow, though, I mean, if an event you're going in there and help with this place, if this is your business, I mean, um, that's good. I don't know how to say that, because I don't know how we're going to do it, some, some events are here, they're, the more that can help, the more you need to help them.
Yeah.
Maybe they bring in people that, you know, if they need the standard for, uh, being trained to kind of close streets, or maybe they have their own, maybe some energy, um, because they've got, I don't know, that's, that's really on that.
I agree.
Well, let's, let's look at the.
Yeah, you mean it right there, you can see that.
All right.
The, the, uh, community, uh, community donations.
Yeah.
So, um, I gave you guys quite a few documents on this, and, um, this is another one of those where I think we've kind of got money in different locations, we call it different things, and, um, I don't think we've really kind of looked deeply at this for a while. Starting with the idea that when I look at where the donations come from in our budget, it's like we have thirty thousand dollars plus donation. A hundred thirty thousand, man, is a chamber contract, which is an arrangement, so, um, of the remaining, and if you look on page forty-one and sixty-one, you'll see a listing that we took out of budget, uh, in order of magnitude, that's forty-one and sixty-one. Yeah, got it? So, as you can see, um, the vast majority of those donations are relatively small. Um, but, the chamber, I pulled that out, and you're at basically fifty thousand, eight hundred dollars, and, 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 were things that I would consider actually key donations. Of those, there is a very special, um, one in there, which is the Arizona Community Foundation. And if you go on to the next page, you will see that over the past, I think, eighteen years, we've contributed three hundred thirty-four thousand dollars to that foundation. And the significance of that is, is that the following phase is which? The first one is donations by year over a five-year period. And then the second one is donations to specific groups, and then totals for those groups. The total over that.
That's the one question. What is that southeast, Arizona, state, and, 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 you know?
Yeah. Yeah. So, they help us, for example, with, uh, cleanups, you know, and they did the graffiti maintenance, they can deal with the volunteers, and, so they're always looking for, uh, places that they don't have to worry about. So, basically, over five years, that seventy-eight thousand dollars, that you basically gave them money, and then they have a board that can distribute that money. And one of the ideas I was really thinking about this, like, we'll get, having an application process at the city, right? To say, so instead of having a static group of donations that we do, do we want to then have an application process, right? Just for the sake of that ability, if we're going to provide these donations, then it should be available to the five oh one C three, because there may be people who want money, and are given access to it, and then you can give them a decision on that. Based on what I'm seeing with this community foundation, they essentially are playing that role for you. And they're also inviting you to have a seat at their board, if you want to be part of the process that they already have. So, I guess my question to the council is, given, you know, the list that is receiving those donations, and the amount of money that you've given to the community foundation, and the amount of money that's in your budget, are we happy with the level of donations that we're, we're providing? Are we happy with who we're providing them to? And are we happy with the distribution of that?
I have a question. Am I the liaison? Am I the liaison to this board, or?
You just, you just, I don't know.
Am I on this board?
I was, I was.
Okay, because I have not been invited to a single meeting or thing, so I don't know what.
Yeah, I was, I was. Um, I know, the terms of that, like, the people know this impact, and they have this much, terms of that, we're not, but we're not giving them a recognition for it, and what I think is, is.
I wonder why?
I don't know why, but, uh, maybe you can't tell them, and they, they can always say, we put this stuff, too.
Well, and that's why I'm giving you this information, because I don't know when the last time you actually saw him, and he might get swatted, right?
I don't give him a seat, but he got anything. But, you know, I like. Yeah. 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 Sometimes you want to ask community partners.
And they're more than willing to do that, I think they, they want to do that. Um, they've made that indication last week, pretty engaged in this conversation, right? So, I think they're more than willing to talk, and, and, again, they're more than willing to have a member of council on the board that makes the decisions, and obviously get distributed. But if we go down that road, which is fine, because first of all, it's efficient, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, they're already doing it. We then want to look at some of these other donations that we're doing, do we want to make those donations part of that process? I think we see that some of the donations that are in our list, in our budget, are also donations that they're making to the same organizations for different things. Um, so, I mean, we want to continue to split it, and keep these stats in our budget, so we fund the seniors, and then use the Arizona Foundation for more, uh, broad-based, far-reaching interaction with five oh one C threes. They come in, they can give you a report, and then also wanted the council to then be on their board, that would do the decision-making for the distribution of all these grants. Which would essentially require nothing for much difference, right? And what we're doing now, except we pursue the, it would be different, but it would be very efficient, because if you just carry on, you're positioned now, we would just do it from a position of knowing what they're bringing, and the folks are just rolling it over.
Page forty-one, sixty-one.
Yeah.
No, it's in the listing that the organization, so if you go down, beginning on page four and three of sixty-one, you've got two scratch sheets.
These are the donations that the Arizona Community Foundation, the other list is what you know.
So, we're giving the foundation, with a hundred million dollars in our past.
Yes. You're giving them money every year, so if you look on page forty-two of sixty-one, those are the monies that you've given them over the past eighteen years, so that allows them to make those further going.
Which, I, I think they have to point, decided to give it to them, but we were having, on the end, like, we're continuing to, something massive for some. And despite show care, Mr. Careless in the distribution.
Council, yes, yes.
Okay. I thought I looked, I don't know whether it's right.
So, again, my question is, can we continue to evolve the deal? Can we keep the stat in our, in the budget, and then just get more involved with the community foundation? See if, you know, can we make contact with them, we can get one of the council members on that board, and just be part of that selection distribution process? And again, you can see, part of the reason I do the instructions I did is, you can see where they're going, you can see who's proceeding those funds, so you have to know that, where your money eventually is going. And I don't know if that fund has other outside sources besides ours, because I think they have nearly, have to be a dollars reserve fund right now. I think they've given donations from other organizations as well.
This has to be the one.
Or?
The donation.
In our budget, or they're, they're.
What we give, well, what we give, let, say, like, let, you give a money on this?
That's us, that's, that's part of our budget process. But again, we don't really discuss it, it's really more, like, essentially we discuss it in passing, but we're not really, that I can, in, in terms of, we want, you know, we want to spend better, if you have more, or less money.
Can I make a statement?
No.